I would like to call to order the the regular meeting of the Board of Education for Thursday, September 24th, 2015. We're expecting Mrs. Lou McCormick. Mr. Patton is out of town on business. Ms. Carnell is at school events with her child and we expect her late. Mrs. Gerber, the same thing. She's at a school event. It sounds like a routine, but she's at a school event and then is expected much later. Dr. Tidal is also shuffling children around because he's a parent as well as a superintendent, so we expect him here shortly. Present is myself, Phil Dwyer, Mr. Convettito, Mr. Fattabene, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, and Mr. Llewellyn. Could I have you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start off with a public comment. We do expect our students to be joining us in October, but at the moment they're not. So we'll start off with public comment. We have two voting items that you can comment on at the time the item is up for vote, and there is a discussion item that will lead to a vote at the next meeting, which is the first reading of the 1617 school calendar. And members of the public are welcome to speak now on that topic or wait for the topic to come up at the time on the agenda. Does anybody wish to come forward to speak on the school calendar? Please come forward.
Does it have to be the school calendar?
It has to be an agenda item.
Yeah.
What agenda item are you here to talk about?
Approval of the minutes.
That's a voting item, so you can talk at the time the minutes are up for approval. Okay? Anybody else on the school calendar as a discussion topic? Again, you are welcome to speak to it when it's, when we come to that item on the agenda. Thank you very much. Mr. Donald. We have a presentation on the Fairfield Ludlow High School Building Committee update. Its chairman, Mr. Mark Donald, is here with us. So with, with that as a simple introduction for a complicated project, I'll, please bring us up to date.
Well, I'm a simple man for a complicated project, so hopefully it'll, it'll be brief and to the point. So just to remind everybody, we are work completing phases one and two. Phase one would be the roof, as well as phase two, which is the classrooms, science labs, and the cafeteria addition. Right now, those two phases are in punch list phase. The students are occupying everything. They are enjoying the cafeteria and the senior lounge, as well as the science labs and the foreign language classrooms that have been put in effect. I have heard great feedback from kids and parents, as well as the faculty, and they're both, and all enjoying it. And the one minor complaint I heard was that the cafeteria was a little small. But as we know with teenagers, they're not so budget conscious. Their budget is about as limited as the minutes on their cell phones. So as of now, the project is complete with, or excuse me, as I said, on punch list items. Phase three, we're still waiting, which is the windows, the PCB remediation, as well as installation of the new windows. We are still going back and forth with EPA. We think we're getting very close to getting a decision on that in regards to our remediation and what is, what is required. And of course, we're trying to be as fiscally prudent as possible. Once we get the EPA approval, we will be able to get a more solid estimate and hopefully go out to bid at the first of the year so that we can begin doing all the necessary heading, getting to the town bodies with an exact price for those windows. And so that would be a two-summer project, and that would be ideally complete in summer of 2017. Any questions so far?
Any questions from board members on an update from the Fairfield Ludlow building project? Mr. Convettito.
I know we're over budget, but excluding phase three, is there residual funds left in the project?
Well, currently, we have about $125,000 left in contingency. Of course, we'll be spending some of that. We are, do some money back from both the construction manager and the project manager, potentially, as well. And we have spent about $150,000 on design phase, as well as the environmental consultant on phase three so far. So some funds have been spent.
And do you have an estimate on what you might get back so that, all in, what the, you might expect to have as a starting off point for the phase three?
It's, it's hard to say because we do still have some of the punch list items to complete. We believe we're, we're due back approximately $100,000 from, between the construction manager and the, and the project manager in terms of funds that were not used. So, you know, from there, it's, it's anybody's guess as to what the fine tuning and the punch list items are due. But we do believe we will make it within a well-reasonable shot of the 11,000, excuse me, 11,600,000.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Just a quick question about what the nature of the punch list items are.
Do I, I know that there were some concrete issues. There were some, some other sidewalk and some, some issues that needed to be cleared up before the full COO was issued. Right now, it's a temporary COO. I don't recall what the outstanding ones, but they're hoping to wrap most of those up by the second week in October.
If there are no others, Mr. Fattabene.
Yeah, you had mentioned that the, you're still negotiating with the EPA Environmental Protect Agency for the remediation plan for the PCBs. So I imply that to mean that the EPA is requesting something that we have not yet agreed to.
So basically, we submit a plan, they come back with four, four or five qualifying questions or clarifying questions, and we submit answers to those questions, and they come back. And I believe Mr. Morbeto can correct me, but I think we're on our, our fourth or fifth submission, so we think we're getting closer to a resolution.
I guess the next question I would have is, to the extent that the requirements of the EPA are not resolved and you have to comply with what they necessarily request, would there be a budgetary impact to the project?
Absolutely. We think we are able to encapsulate a lot of the PCBs, which is much more cost-effective from our end and safe than having to remediate everything and replace brick, or there's no structural issues at this point. But obviously, if we had to remove paint across the entire, you know, upper floors, et cetera, that would be very, very expensive.
All right, thank you. If there are no others, one last question. You mentioned that that project would be a two-summer project and probably not finished until 2017, so sometime in the 2017-18 school year is when you might be able to say, okay, we've finally closed out the project and come to us for a final acceptance. It's, it's that far out?
That's, that's what we're looking at.
Have I discouraged you with that question, that you've signed up for that long of a project?
I hope to be here in 2017, if my kids don't kill me first.
Okay, thank you. If there are no, no other questions, thank you very much. As the board knows, we have taken advantage of the Energy Opportunities Program at various schools, and staff have additional schools that they're working on, so I'll ask Mr. Sal Morbeto to come up. But in the meantime, I'll put the first motion on the table if I could. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the Energy Opportunities Program, proposed project at Jennings Elementary School as enclosed. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, do I have a second? Mr. Convettito? So the item is on the table for us. Do you wish to make a presentation and tell us a little bit about Jennings?
Good evening, everybody. Sal Morbeto, Manager of Construction, Security, and Safety. We have two more. We're speaking about Jennings at this point. Energy Opportunity, we had a proposal for two other schools a few months ago, and this is very similar. The UI has a program called Energy Opportunities in which they will finance for up to four years at 0% the net costs of, after incentives, of a lighting upgrade at a facility. At Jennings, the package is primarily an exterior lighting upgrade. This would be parking lots, parking lot lights and exterior fixtures on the building. Everything is switching over to LED fixtures. Payback is under four years. Financing would be for four years, and it's a win-win situation for the district. We would not be spending, we would be seeing a small savings from our projected energy usage now, so our bills would go down. And then at the expiration of the financing, we would see all of the savings from the energy upgrade at a lower, lower price every month.
That's it. Any questions on the Jennings project? My guess is both projects are very similar, but let's stay on the motion for Jennings School. Any questions on the Jennings School project? If there are no questions, this is a voting item, so I'll go to the public for any public comment on participating in the Energy Opportunities Program at Jennings School. Is anybody from the public that wishes to come forward and speak on this topic? Seeing nobody come forward, is the board ready to vote? The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the Energy Opportunities Program, proposed project at Jennings Elementary School as enclosed. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, you just got here. Right, so Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Convettito, Mr. Fattabene, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, Mr. Llewellyn. Any noes? No any abstentions? Ms. Carnell abstains because she just arrived at the meeting. Let me go on to the second motion, second school. The Board of Education approve the Energy Opportunities Program, proposed project at North Stratfield Elementary School as enclosed. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, seconded by Mr. Convettito. Are there any differences in this that you wish to highlight?
The difference for North Stratfield, it's a different company that will be doing the work. It's American Solar and Eternal Power. The difference on this project is it has a faster payback, so the financing will be a three-year term. The scope of work is both interior and exterior. It is all LED lights, and it's a lot of bang for the buck. Everything else, except for the previous project, is the same thing here. We will see lower bills immediately by a small increment, and once the financing is done, we will see the entire savings to our monthly energy usage. Win-win.
Okay. Any discussion or comments or questions? Mr. Convettito.
Why is the post of Jennings, are we doing interior at North Stratfield and not doing them at Jennings?
Jennings, they looked at it. The fixtures, North Stratfield had older fixtures, so they benefit better from the upgrade. Jennings has some newer fixtures, so it's not quite ripe for the opportunity.
Any other questions on the Energy Opportunities Program at North Stratfield Elementary School? Hearing none. Out to the public on, on the North Stratfield Energy Opportunities Program, anybody from the public wish to speak on the North Stratfield project? Nobody coming forward. Back to the board for vote. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the Energy Opportunities Program, proposed project at North Stratfield Elementary School as enclosed. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous with seven people here.
Thank you very much.
Now on to the first reading of the 2016-2017 school calendar. We'll have a discussion among the board, and then, since this will be a voting item at our next meeting, if any member of the public wishes to comment on the school calendar at this time, you're welcome as well. Dr. Tidal?
Hey, thank you. I know this is some of our favorite subject matter, and also previously, people have expressed an interest to me in getting this out sooner rather than later because people plan their vacations way in advance, and so, given that we're operating for 1617 for the first time under the new rules about a regional school calendar, I thought we'd bring it up here and get this taken care of by the next meeting so we can inform the public about next year's calendar. So you might recall that the state passed legislation establishing that each region, establish a regional school calendar. And then each school district has to abide by that school calendar, although there are five flex days allowable to, where you can deviate from the school calendar. So it's uniform, but it's not uniform. And several people from the region get together and determine what looks like the regional school calendar should look like, and then each board can approve its own calendar as long as it stays within the rules. So I left for you at the table this document that says CES Regional Uniform School Calendar.
You all have that at your table, I think, and I think we made copies in the back.
So this is not necessarily the, the calendar that CES itself is going to go by. This is the CES Region School Calendar, Regional School Calendar. And it, it actually tracks our existing calendar very closely. In fact, we can keep the exact calendar that we have, or have had for the last several years, and roll it into next year and be in compliance. The rules of the regional school calendar are that the region has to set a common start date, it has to set two common professional development days, and Election Day must be one of them. There must be two vacation periods during the school year. One has to be in December, and one has to be either the second or third week of April. One common vacation period during the summer, that happens naturally. And a common agreement on the February break, how many days and which days it'll be, and then common agreement on the holidays. Although, again, districts retain five flex days for individual needs. So basically, the calendar that we've laid out for you is the school calendar that we're operating under this year. It does comply with the regional school calendar, which also has a start date for students of Thursday, September 1st. From the regional school calendar, there's a big star next to September 1st, and on our calendar, it's noted that that's the first day of school. Then the, the regional calendar also takes the one day off for Rosh Hashanah, which next year is October 3rd, and one day off for Yom Kippur, which next year is October 12th, and we, we also take those days. The Election Day, Professional Development Day is November 8th, and that's mandated in the Common Professional Day. The other Common Professional Day that we have is the day before school starts. That's designated as August 30th. That's one of the days we take for PD, so we're compliant there. Conference days in October, or half-days for any reason, are not in the regional school calendar. Those follow our, our pattern here. In November, you'll see November 11th. That's a day where we take Veterans Day off, but that is not a day in the regional calendar. So that's one of our flex days. November and December are pretty straightforward, the way we've always done it. You'll notice a quirk this year that January 1st falls on a Sunday. This happened to me once, not here, must have been seven years ago, because this comes up about every seven years, where everybody put their calendar together. January 1st was a Sunday. Everybody was going back to school on Monday, and everybody then realized that, wait a minute, Monday's actually the holiday. So you can't have school on Monday the 2nd. That's actually the federal holiday. So despite the fact that the 1st is on Sunday, you'll see Monday as the holiday, and then school would begin on Tuesday, January 3rd. We'd be closed on Martin Luther King Day, as is the regional calendar. That's actually required by state law prior to this. The February break in the regional calendar is the exact February break that we have. This is not a coincidence. I was on the committee. And, but this February 16th, that half-day for PD, again, that's our discretion, doesn't count against us in any way, but you can see that the regional calendar does have the four-day weekend in February as we have it now and as we'll have it next year under this proposal. Nothing going on in March, other than some elementary conference days. The April break is the same one as the regional calendar recommendation, Memorial Day, and that puts our last day of school, that's not noted on the regional calendar because in the regional calendar, everyone has a different number of days. The minimum is 180, so they don't mark on the regional calendar what the last day of school is. Our 182nd day then would be June 13th, Tuesday. Under our calendar guidelines, that would allow us to use the remainder of that week, the 14th, 15th, and 16th, as well as the entire next week, as snow days before we had to go into April vacation. So that will be the plan as we're proposing it, and I guess I'll stop there and take any questions or comments. I would just ask that if you are thinking about making a proposal to change this, that you let me know either now or before the next meeting, because I need to make sure that if we make the change, it comports with the rules of the regional school calendar. Maybe we've, so we're a little constricted here, and I think all the things we've wanted to change have been tried, so I'm hoping that this is relatively easy, but then again, no calendar ever is, so I guess that's my best, my best explanation of it for now.
And actually, our bylaws do require that we not take action unless it's an emergency, unless notice has been given to our board and the superintendent has had a chance to analyze it, so certainly, any suggestions you have, please get, bring them forward. Any discussion at the table at the moment? Mr. Llewellyn, followed by Mr. Fattabene.
Dr. Tidal, quick question. So do we have no snow days built into this for the 13th ending, or are there a couple?
No, that would be, that would be if we-
That's the best case.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. In other words, if we have no snow days, and we just run the calendar through-
Right.
This has happened once in my lifetime, I think.
Right.
Then the school year would actually end on June 13th.
An unfair question, but do you remember how many we had the last couple days, last couple years?
Last year, we had four.
Okay.
The most we've had is 10. So we have bumped into the April vacation twice in my tenure here, where we've had to go back and take days out of the April vacation. We did, the one year you might recall, the year we had the hurricanes and the snowstorms and so forth, the board decided to actually retain the April vacation and run the school year out to the last week in June, to great consternation to all those families who have kids going to summer camp and summer jobs and so forth. But we've gone anywhere from, I would say, the typical year now is five or six.
That's what I guess. Okay. Thank you very much.
It's my favorite topic you bring up.
Ask any superintendent if they remember how many snow days they had to call, and actually, it's seared into their memory. Mr. Fattabene.
Yeah, you had mentioned that the Uniform School Calendar, or the Regional Uniform School Calendar permits five flex days, and if I understand and I followed your commentary, we only use, we're only going to use one, and that's Veterans Day.
That's correct.
All right.
Any other questions from board members on the school, proposed school calendar? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
A couple of questions. So at this point, with this regional calendar, this puts ours exactly at a match with the Aquaculture School and the other magnet schools?
But we don't know what the other, so Aquaculture School is a Bridgeport School, so they follow Bridgeport calendar. Other magnet schools, like, there's one in Norwalk, if you could go to that school, that would be on the Norwalk calendar. CES, Board at CES may not have adopted their calendar yet, but my guess is it's going to look very similar to, to this. This was the point of the regional school calendar, was that you have all these schools operating on different schedules and that there would be some, the idea was to have some cost savings associated with this.
That was my next question.
But it's, really has not turned out to be the case because you have these exceptions and so on and so forth, but it, it will bring the schedules into much closer agreement than they have been, but I don't think they will be a perfect match. Every, every school district has its own particular, quirks is the wrong word, traditions of what days they take off, and those districts probably will want to continue those traditions and will use their flex days to do it. It will never be a perfect match. That was the idea. When the legislature passed this, they actually were going to put a calendar in for the whole state, and they were going to set it up from the state and everyone was going to follow it, and that rapidly deteriorated into what we have now.
Okay. So then you've answered the question that, in fact, there are no cost savings have been realized for Fairfield.
It would be minimal. I can't think of a way that this actually ends up saving us any real money anywhere, even though that was the promise of it. If there is, it's trivial.
Okay. And then I had one last question, which actually is not related to this calendar, but, and if you would rather I ask, I wanted to ask you about the April 26th of this year, and that's out of the blue, and I apologize, I should have emailed that to you, but I've been, on the topic of the calendar, it's, I kept meaning to ask you. And is that something that you've already have a plan in place, or will you in the future that you can let people know well in advance?
For the benefit of the audience, you might explain what you mean by that.
Sorry, the presidential primary day, when our schools would be needed for voting, and if at that point, whether it's a hotly contested or not, we'll have several sites being used for voting, is, is the district already figuring out what to do about that since we neglected that when we voted on the calendar?
We haven't, hasn't been our topic for discussion, but sounds like it's one that needs to be.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the 2016-17 calendar? If not to the public, this is a discussion item that will be on the board agenda for the next meeting for a vote. Any member of the public wish to make a comment on the 2016-17 school calendar? Okay. So this will be on the agenda for the next meeting, as a voting item. And a reminder that if you do have any further questions or proposed changes, the staff very much appreciate it if you could give them a heads-up so they can study the impact of that, not only locally, but regarding the regional calendar. On to approval of the minutes. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the September 8th, 2015 regular meeting. Do I have a motion? This is Maxon Cannelly. Do I have a second? Mr. Convettito? Discussion on the minutes. I see that there is a, some recommended amendments on the table. So, Mr. Llewellyn, if you'd like to-
Sure.
-bring them forward, please do.
Sure, thank you. Page three. Line stating, okay. Two-thirds of the way down. Mr. Llewellyn questioned whether the data was by standard by total levels. It's, it's that paragraph. What it states is he's interested in what might be driving the high, the high school discrepancy and asked for a report on the board and how teacher tenure affects achievement. What I'd like to replace that with is, like Mr. Convettito, Mr. Llewellyn is interested to understand what is driving the discrepancy at Ward. He referred Mr. Cummings' previous statement about analyzing the impact of tenure on S-BAC results by class. He asked when both Ward and the 10, and the tenure analyses would be reported back to the board, because most members of the board in the town would like to understand it, too. So that is what I would propose.
Okay, so, so can I ask you a question so you can get it in motion? Okay, so can I ask you a question, so you can get it in motion form?
Yes.
Where you say, delete on, on the line starting Mr. Llewellyn questioned, generally, you try and say, and up to what word are you deleting?
I, I think that this was reformat, I think that's the way I'd actually had it, but we're going to be deleting the sentence, starting with, "He is interested in what might be driving," so that full sentence goes.
So the question whether the data was by strand or total levels, that stays in, correct, or not?
Um, yes.
So the sentence that starts with, "He is interested," and ends with, "Affects achievement," is that the sentence that comes out?
That is correct.
Okay, is that the only wording that comes out from the current minutes?
Correct. So the motion would be, I move to delete the second sentence, in the paragraph that begins, "Mr. Llewellyn questioned whether the data was by strand or total levels," and replace it with the sentence-
That is in front of us.
-like Mr. Confortito, and Mr., yes.
Yeah.
Sorry?
Or referenced?
Yeah, I think it was a typo.
Can you clarify what Mr. Llewellyn is?
He referenced, yes.
He not referred, he referenced. And so your motion is to delete the sentence, "He is interested in what," and up into the word, "achievement," and to replace it with, like Mr. Confortito, the only change to the printed paragraph is, "He referenced Mr. Cummings' previous statement." So do you wish to make that as a motion?
I do.
And is there a second? Mrs. Lou McCormick, you want to make further comments on your proposed amendment?
I think that it communicates with a little more specificity the nature of the discussions that occurred at the table, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, the secondor, do you wish to make any comments? No? Any other board members wish to make comments? Mr. Fattabean?
I guess to the chair, I'll ask whether any board member knows that the proposed amendment is not accurate.
I am not aware. Mrs. Maxon, Cannelly? You've asked that of the board members, so, Mrs. Maxon, Cannelly?
Not that it is not accurate, I think that it is not consistent.
No, but-
This question was accurate.
Yeah, the question was accurate. I received no indication from Mrs. Gerber, our secretary, that it was not accurate, nor did I receive anything from her that said it was accurate, so, so I have to believe that Mr. Llewellyn has put forth something that he thinks is an accurate statement. Any other comments from board members? Mrs. Maxon, Cannelly?
I had actually asked Mrs. Gerber, and I'm sorry that she's not here to give the numbers, I'd asked her if she happened to know what a transcription company would cost. To say that it was exorbitantly expensive is putting it mildly, and so I'm going to fall back on what has been my consistent refrain. I absolutely agree, I think Mr. Llewellyn has accurately captured virtually a transcript of what he had to say. However, I see it as being no improvement on the essence of the conversation, which is what was in that sentence, asking about high school discrepancy, teacher tenure impacting achievement. And I don't intend to break with all of my previous votes of wanting to be consistent with keeping it down to the essence of what was communicated, because otherwise, why should Mr. Llewellyn's comments be comment, reported as transcript, and for example, Mrs. Carnell's not be? It's not consistent with what appears anywhere else.
Thank you. Any other comments that people wish to make? Let me see, is there anybody else before Mr. Llewellyn speaks a second time? Go ahead, Mrs. Lou McCormick.
And similarly, I guess, I would feel that I would want to be consistent in supporting more detail and transparency on the discussions that actually happened, given that this is really the only written record that remains after the meeting occurs, and saying high schools in general versus Ward does actually change, I think, the essence of the conversation, it's more specific.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Llewellyn, and then Mrs. Maxon, Cannelly?
I think to comment, as it relates to the two points, one was the fact that, I'm not sure Ward is actually mentioned here, and that was a topic that was discussed for some time period, that was an outlier, that is of great interest to a lot of folks, as to what the discrepancy could be there, and I don't see that here reflected in the minutes, so I think that is a material change. The other point here is, the concept of looking at tenure was not my concept, that was Mr. Cummings' concept, that he had thrown out to the group, and I thought that that was a great concept, and think that it would be great to have it reported back. So I do think it actually adds something more, Ms. Cannelly, and just as, as you know, another point of, of procedure here, I guess, is, turn back the clock to 2012, the minutes are markedly different, so there is context there.
Let's stay, keep the comment on, conversation on this set of minutes. Final comment, Mrs. Maxon, Cannelly?
Yes, when it says the discrepancy at Ward, that's in fact inaccurate, because the discrepancy at Ward, as you're saying, it's a discrepancy between this score and a previous score at Ward. In fact, what you're talking about is the discrepancy between the two schools, which is why the first version is in fact actually more accurate to what it is that you were taking issue with.
Mr. Fattabean, you wish to speak?
Well, since these are the board's minutes, and they involve member, statements made by members, typically, I consider the issue a little differently. I consider, in essence, a matter of courtesy, that if a board member wants to include something in the minutes, as long as it's accurate to what that statement was at the time he made it, as a matter of courtesy, I have no problem in allowing that board member to include that in the minutes.
Mr. Confortito?
I don't necessarily disagree with Mr. Fattabean, but my recollection, and again, I would have to go back to the tape, because there's also a professional's opinion in here, and my recollection of Mr. Cummings' statement was that he gave a whole list of things that may or may not impact the S-BAC results, tenure being only one of them, and this reads much differently than my recollection of that exchange.
If there are no further comments from board members, are there any members of the public that wish to speak to the minutes? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Monique Sudikoff, 472 Lockwood Road.
And let me interrupt, I'm sorry. Because there's an amendment on the table, it would be talking about the amendment that Mr. Llewellyn has suggested. If your comment is not on the amendment, then we have to wait till it gets amended back to the main motion of the minutes itself.
I think my comment could apply to the amendment.
Thank you very much.
Having observed the board for the past year, I feel that discussion of the minutes and other procedural items is a deliberate attempt to obstruct and slow down the work of this board by members that find themselves in the minority. I have great respect for the minority opinion, I've listened to everybody at this board make great points that often disagree with mine, but you've made me think, and I appreciate that. That frankly, has ceased to happen over the past few months, as you have allowed yourself to behave in an inappropriate way for a board. Having prolonged discussion over minutes and agendas is, I think, the very worst of politics, what many of us complain about on a national level, and it saddens me that it has made its way to my beloved Fairfield. I don't think it's too late. This board, as it currently stands, is going to be together as a group for the next four months, and then we know that two of you have chosen to move on. You can make a choice to not abstain, to vote, to approve the minutes, to stop approving and discussing the agenda items like this. This board, and what the work you do in this room, can be an example for the town of the best of politics, of local politics, instead of the very worst, and I would urge each of you to go back to that, your focus, the work at hand, and stop the nonsense over the minutes and other procedural items.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to come forward? Please state your name and address.
Suzanne Meska, 123 Rygate Road. I'm going to gear my statements to the amendment. My view is that I've been coming to Board of Ed meetings over the last 11 years, and the only way to go back and fully appreciate when something has happened, or what the discussion was, is to use the minutes. I appreciate essence, but sometimes to really appreciate what the board was going through, or what the administration was offering, is so important, and you can't get that on an essence, you need that discussion point. I mean, these are two, to me, very different things, because, one, you've got a member of the administration weighing in on an issue, and I think that's important. So, I mean, I appreciate that you don't want transcripts, but I do find that in the last couple of years, we, we've tended to go to something that is more essence-driven, and not more specific. I mean, you know, if, if I want to go back and see what this board did in redistricting or something else, these, this is where you go as a member of the public, in order to get the, where you all were going at that point, so I would like to see a little bit more, I don't think it has to be a transcript, but I do think we need to put a little more information in here, and so I'd like to see that change take place. I also, I know I might get stopped, but I also want to comment that it is only in recent times that the public has been allowed to address board minutes. That has always been your minutes, and I don't really know how I feel that I should be able to weigh in on this, but I thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to come forward, to talk about the amendment to the minutes? Seeing nobody, let me just make one comment, I know the board has heard me say what I think the form of minutes should be, so I'm not going to repeat all those comments, I'll join with my colleague in voting against this amendment, not because I don't think it may be accurate, but because I think that level of detail is not required in our minutes. Shall we cast our votes now, all in, do people understand the motion that's on the table in terms of what to delete and what to add? Any question on that? If not, all in favor of the amendment as proposed by Mr. Llewellyn, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mrs. Carnell, Mr. Fattabean, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Maxon, Cannelly abstain, Mr. Confortito, the motion passes 4-2-1, right? Mr. Llewellyn, you have your second amendment that you wish to make.
Yes, thank you.
And, and just for consistency's sake, where you say add, you say Llewellyn, you probably should read it as Mr. Llewellyn.
Sure, thank you. So, Mr. Dwyer says, pretty much, sure to suggest a target date, this is basically the line below where we were, for return to, return of this discussion until further study is completed. Dr. Title agreed, the data needs more analysis. I'd like to add to that, Mr. Llewellyn said, he does not think that the Ward request is off-point, he stated that the discrepancy is too wide not to give the board a report on their findings. Dr. Title offered to let the board know when he gets closer to getting the information, but right now, he couldn't give a timetable on reporting back.
You've made that as a motion, is there a second to the motion? Mrs. Lou McCormick, do you wish to make any further comments on your motion to amend by adding the sentences that you read, and that are printed in front of us, with the addition for the keeper of the minutes, that it should start with Mr. Llewellyn, just for form? Any comments that you wish to make, Mr. Llewellyn? As the secondor, any comments you wish to make, Mrs. Lou McCormick? Any comments from the board, that they wish to have? Mrs. Maxon, Cannelly?
I'd say one final comment, the public comment addressing the idea that we're not supposed to capture the essence in these minutes, is essentially saying that we should be disobeying our own bylaws. Okay, so somehow, the next board needs to figure this out, because this is absolutely absurd. The one part about Mr. Llewellyn's amendment that I think is a good point, is the explicit offer by Dr. Title to report back to us, which is not actually included in the original language, but again, otherwise, the essence of that perfectly accurately communicates, whereas I think we did just approve an amendment, which might in fact be inaccurate, and I think it's a shame that this is what we're getting to.
Thank you. If there are no other, Mr. Fattabean, followed by Mr. Llewellyn?
Sure. I'm going to ask a similar question I asked with the last amendment, whether any board member knows this to be an accurate statement? Or the amendment to be inaccurate?
You're addressing it through the chair, to any board member, any board member know whether this is accurate or not? And my answer to you would be the same.
Inaccurate.
Inaccurate. Any, my answer would be the same on this, as it was in the first one. Any other board member have any comment about accuracy? No, then we assume that it's, Mr. Llewellyn is presenting it accurately. Mr. Llewellyn, you had one last comment you wanted to make?
I'll defer, thank you.
Okay. To the public on this amendment to the amendments, to the minutes, as presented by Mr. Llewellyn, any member of the public wish to come forward and speak on this amendment? Seeing none, back to the board for a vote. You understand the amendment that's in front of you, and in writing, with the addition of the word, "Mr."? All in favor of the amendment as presented, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Fattabean, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Maxon, Cannelly abstain, again, 4-2-1. So we're back to the main motion as amended by these two statements, and the deletion of the one sentence that, that was referenced in the original motion. Any comments on the minutes beyond this, by any board member? Any comments from the public on the main motion of approving the minutes as amended? Seeing none? This may, if there's no further comments, I'll just make one, this may seem as a surprise to board members, while I do not think that this additional detail in capturing the one board member's comments is advisable, and I think over time, if each board member decides that they want their comments in it, we could find ourselves with very, very long comments, and I think my fear is that it will grow to that over time. But, once the board approves a set of minutes through amendment, they are the board's accurate reflection as of tonight, as to what the minute should say, so I'll vote to approve the minutes, because they're what a majority of the board felt was accurate, not because I think this level of detail should be put in here. Any other comments that people want to make? If not, back to the board for a vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes of September 8th, 2015, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Confortito, Mrs. Maxon, Cannelly, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed, Mr. Fattabean. Thank you very much. And no abstentions, so the vote is 6-1. Thank you very much. We are at the superintendent's report at, with two issues on the table, certified staffing update, retirements, resignations, and new staff. It says Mrs. Leffert, but do you wish to make any opening comments?
Sure. I think at the last, the last meeting, we had noted the, the number of retirements and resignations, and there was some discussion about why people left the district and so forth, and also, we had traditionally given you our new hire experience to show where people came into the district, on what steps, and so forth. So I'm going to have Ann review this data, and I think this does give the board some information that people seem to be interested in, why people resign, and so I asked Ann to try to capture that, and so she did that on one page, and the other side is the new hire experience comparison over the past four years. Ann?
Great. So I'll start with the resignations, because that starts with a chronological order, we had our folks resign first, who left. We had 44 resignations, and as you see on the sheet, it's broken down by category, as to why folks resigned. This is through conversations that I had with, with most of these folks, building administrators had with these folks as well, so that's listed right there. The other side shows our new hires. You see that there were 22 retirees on the bottom of the page, and we broke out our new hires by level of experience and certification, so you see the bachelors broken out across three different- So, you see the bachelors broken out across three different bands, masters across five different bands, sixth year across four different bands. The last line is missing, there's a one there that's a doctoral, someone at a doctoral level, so I apologize for that.
The one thing we want to point out on the new hire is that a growing number of our new hires are experienced teachers.
You'll see a change there, and you'll also, you know, master's step one, that number has been traditionally a pretty high number. And the reason for that is many of the folks who are master's step one are candidates who perhaps were with us the year before. So, they were a student teacher, they were a building sub for a full year, they were building intern for a full year. They're completing their master's degree if they're an intern. Building subs typically have finished their coursework and are still looking for a teaching position. So, the strength in that, especially that master's step one, is a large number of those folks have been with the district previous, the previous year, so they know our curriculum, they've been working with our students in our buildings. So, I think that's worth noting there as well.
I think you can see, not breaking out the sixth year, which is just steps one to five, there's so few of them. But even if all of those people were step one, there were seven bachelor's step ones, 11 master's step ones, and even if all three of the sixth years' step ones were, one to five were on one, which they weren't, that means that that's 18, 21 of 72 people without experience. Or to put it the other way around, right?
You're not going to find really a sixth year step one. You're really not.
Yeah, right. So, you're looking at 70 to 75 percent of our new hires are experienced teachers.
Correct.
So, we go for quality. We need experience, we do pay for it. And the days of Fairfield only hires at step one, you can't get a job here unless, you know, if you have experience, I mean, those days are long gone and hard to find. And one other thing I would point out is that if you're trying to add up the resignations 44 and the 22 retirees, you're not going to get 72.
No.
And that's explained by new positions.
Well, new positions as well as these are individuals, not FTE. So, the FTEs vary. If a .6 retires and you have to hire a .4, they're both a one, so, on this list.
I also want to point out on the resignation side that, I'm trying to be, you know, careful about how we word this, but the greatest reason that people leave is not meeting the district performance standards. So, you want to get your turnover down, then just tell us not to deal with people who aren't meeting our standards, and we can get the number down, but I don't think that's really what you want. So, it is, I think Ann's done a good job breaking it down. We do talk to people. I know this came up at the last meeting, so if we want to talk about doing that in more detail, we can. But realistically, of the 44 people that left, the only ones who really left to work in another district and kind of make a lateral move was six.
Correct.
And remember the base on this? This is teachers only, so we're talking about 960 people. Okay, that's, that's it, right?
That's it.
Questions from the Board? I know, Ms. Carnell, that this was a topic, at least the exit interview process and why people leave was a question you raised at the last meeting. So, certainly, if you want to go first, I would recognize you, but if not...
Thank you for this breakdown, and hopefully it didn't take that much time away. This is actually helpful to see it like this. I know that we can't, but I'd love to understand more of the mutual agreement, but I know that's not allowed. I guess the question is, and this may be opening up a can of worms as usual, are we going to go forward with a formal company to do the exit interviews, a third party?
As I shared with you, you and Mrs. Parks and myself met over the summer to talk about this. I think we had a very good conversation. You and I spoke about a week ago after the last Board meeting. It's an area and a topic that we're researching. I don't have an answer for you yet. We are really just finishing getting our hires in and getting some data up to the state because we're required to get information about all of our teachers up to the state by tomorrow. So, we've been working on that, but as I said to you, I'm fully researching this, and I expect by December to have some further information on it.
That's great. I just have one last question. Dr. Title, you mentioned 960 as the number?
Wrong numbers, yeah.
Yeah, it's round.
Of teachers.
Six is my lucky. Is that only teachers?
That's teachers, not administrators. So, roughly 1,000, again, I'm rounding here, roughly 1,000 certified positions in the district, about 40 to 45 of those are administrative. So, this does not reflect administrative turnover. There was hardly any of that, but that's why I've given you that as the denominator. So, if you want to look at it as, you know, whatever you call it, 4% or whatever it is, 5% in that range. Not all of it were voluntary.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mrs. Lou McCormick, followed by Mr. Fattabean.
So, if I look at this chart and I look...
Which chart are you looking at?
I'm sorry, this is the new hire experience.
Okay.
If I wanted to understand the total turnover, you said I cannot add the total to the retirees, or I can't?
So, well, the 44 resignations, the 22 retirees gets you to 66. We added some positions, but not all of these are full-time positions. It could be a .4 person left the district, or a .6 person left the district. Those are both a one in these columns. I don't tell you what their FTE is in these columns.
That's okay. So, because when we look at the total personnel, we're looking at total people also, not FTEs when they say, I'm sorry, the 960. The 960 number is just total people, total teachers, right?
Rounded. Again, some of those are not full-time positions. They're, 1,000.15 is our FTE count for certified.
Is the 960 FTEs or those people?
FTEs.
So, the 960 is FTEs?
Correct.
And if you converted the 72 to FTEs, it would be a slightly smaller number?
Correct.
Yeah. To accommodate that some of these are part-time.
Correct. Some of these are less than 1.0, correct.
Okay, so then, the ratio is really about 70 full-time person equivalents or something like that, whatever, something close like that.
Probably a little less than that, actually.
Okay, so maybe 65 to 960. Is that the right way to look at it approximately?
As far as FTE?
Ratio of understanding turnover.
Yeah, you know, close. I haven't done it by FTE, so I can't tell you which positions, off the top of my head, which ones were part-time and which ones are full-time. But it's, there's, there are some in there that are part-time positions.
Is it, is it easy to understand how many of these were full-time employees, like full-time teaching staff?
We know the folks who left what their FTE was, we know the folks that we hired what their FTE is. It's not always easy to match that. Positions move from building to building. An example of a music staff person might be .6 in three different buildings, but for the next school year, we're not hiring for that building, we're moving them someplace else, they leave the district, now their position doesn't match where they were. So, it's very, it's a little more complicated than just saying who replaced whom.
I'm just trying to get an understanding of what our turnover rate is and what's considered normal. Because I assume we probably track, do we track that over time?
Well, you see that I've got it on the back the last four years, the new hires.
Right, but is that, so the 960 is constant?
No.
With the total personnel?
No, that changes every year.
That's what I was saying. So, what the ratio is of turnover to total personnel, like how that changes over the years, if it's, do we see a trend in one direction? Do we track that?
Not specifically, no. We have those, I'm sure, those numbers, but I don't have that on the chart for you today.
Because that would be interesting to see.
It doesn't move around a whole lot, the base. I mean, we add people.
Right.
I mean, the Board, you know, sometimes they're added in the budget, sometimes they're not. Hasn't been a lot of movement in the total teacher FTE in the last three or four years because the enrollment hasn't moved a whole lot. You might note, related to that, on the front page of the resignations, there were two people that were part-time who resigned because they wanted a full-time position and no position was available. So, they'd be over as retirement. And also, we have the reverse. Somebody who was a full-time individual wanted to go part-time, there was no part-time opening, and so, they resigned because of that. So, there's always this movement between full-time and part-time, but in the big picture, you know, if you can look at the number of non-retirees that were hired over the year, and, you know, that gives you some baseline. But again, it doesn't include new positions and doesn't include part-time, just the ballpark.
And, you know, the number of retirees changes every year.
Absolutely.
That's another number that impacts this. The number of our staff members who are starting their families, who decide they're going to stay home for a number of years, you know, is our staff younger, you know, we do have a younger staff right now, so you'll see that number changing as well.
I just think all those trends are really interesting to understand the population. I think other trends that might be interesting also is to understand if there's like higher demand for STEM teachers, so that there's more competition for them because there are fewer of them graduating, or, you know, it's, it's just interesting to understand the trends of where we're going to be struggling in terms of teacher staffing and where there's a glut.
Yeah, we know, we know where the shortage areas are. The state defines those for us. We provide, each school district is required to provide data to the state on the number of applicants for each area, and the state defines what the shortage areas are for a school year. So, they've been fairly consistent, you know, the maths, the sciences, world language, special education, administration, those are shortage areas.
That's good to know every year, to see if there's a change in a trend. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Is that it? Thank you. Mr. Fattabean, you had a question?
Maybe two.
Oh, two.
I just want to get clarification on this new hire experience comparison chart. As I understand what you had said, these are not all new hires. They are new hires and changes in positions of existing staff?
No, they are new hires, new to the district.
Okay, so every one of these numbers representing a new individual?
Correct.
All right, because I thought you said that in the master's step one, you have 11 people, some of which may have been employed but had acquired a master's.
Correct, but not employed as a certified teacher. They are newly into the certified teacher ranks.
Non-certified employees.
No, they're certified now.
Well, now they are, but prior to that, they were non-certified.
Correct. We see that master's step one because of our, yes.
But they were employees of the district?
They were not necessarily. An intern is not an employee of the district. An intern comes from the...
I'm just trying to get clarity.
Yeah, well, I don't want to, you know, parse words here, but interns are not employees of the district. They come through the colleges and local universities, right? But a building sub would be somebody who was a previous employee. A substitute teacher would be a previous employee. A student teacher would not be a previous employee as well.
Or how about a teacher that's a bachelor that gets their masters?
That's not reflected on this chart.
All right, well, that was my confusion. I'd like to clarify that. So, these are newly hired certified staff?
Correct.
Okay.
Teaching staff.
And your second question?
My second question?
If you have one.
That was probably a combination. That was a number of questions on a single topic. We'll go on to a new topic, so I want to be accurate here. Resignations. You have a list or categorize the reason for these resignations. Some of which are work close to their home, move out of state, opportunity in another district, and I guess you know that by asking them that.
Speaking with them, correct.
Speaking to them. So, would I be accurate in saying when you spoke to someone that left in these 13 individuals by mutual agreement, they did not tell you they're leaving because I'm not meeting performance district standards?
So, I'm not going to go into specifics in that category. Those are folks for, there are a number of different reasons why they might not be meeting district standards, and I'm not going to speak directly to what those areas are.
That's not my question. My question is, am I correct to assume that they did not tell you that they're leaving because they're not meeting district standards?
So, you're asking, would the employee say, "I'm not doing my work, so I'm leaving"?
Right.
Nobody said that.
They didn't say that, did they?
Nobody said that.
Okay, that was my question.
Thank you. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
I'd, one question regarding something that Mr. Fattabean had said. When we, we get a, I'm not sure if it's a monthly report, but that includes change of status when it's our own employee who moves from, for example, a bachelor's to a master's or a master's to a sixth year.
Correct.
I mean, we get that monthly reflected there.
Yes.
So, that's data we already have. My question, pardon, the bachelors would be the nature of those, and I assume that those are the difficult-to-hire areas? Or is that not correct? What would be the nature of those positions?
No, actually, the difficult-to-hire areas are areas where we tend to find more experienced staff because there just aren't that many people certified in those areas coming out. You might find a bachelor's step one in an elementary classroom, in a PE classroom, areas where we have more opportunity. But we're very fortunate in Fairfield. We have an applicant tracking system. There are hundreds and probably over 1,000 applicants who want to work here in Fairfield. So, we really are able to choose the folks who we think are the best people who can come into these positions. So, if somebody's coming in with a bachelor's step one, I can guarantee you, they have jumped through 5,000 hoops and have proven themselves to be someone who could be an effective teacher in the classroom. So, not all districts have that luxury of people wanting to be here. And when I met with the new teachers this year, it was amazing what they talked about, how excited they were to be considered worthy of teaching in the town of Fairfield. They were thrilled. So, those seven folks, kudos to them because they really were able to show and demonstrate through sample lessons, through their interviews, through documentation they provided to us that they're ready to be effective in the classroom.
Okay, and then my other question was, for these six year, is there, and I apologize, Dr. Title, that I can't remember the actual, I should have looked it up, from the District Improvement Plan, there was that, is it an administrator academy or something that was kind of trained in-house for supporting administrators? Is that, what I was curious about, for these new sixth-year candidates, is there any part of that where they're expressing interest in making that transition, that if we should have openings, that we'd be able to hire from our own pool of candidates? Or are these just experienced teachers who happen to have the sixth year?
It's the latter.
Yeah, definitely. It goes both ways. Not all of these are folks who get a sixth year in administration. It could be a sixth year in reading instruction. We see a lot of that right now, literacy, which is very exciting, or an advanced degree in a science, something like that. But again, I think another opportunity for many of our teachers is the work that we provide for leadership opportunities for our teachers, whether it's working through committees, working on rounds throughout the district, really being able to work with other teachers, mentoring other teachers. Those are great ways that we can really commend folks. We also send a number of staff members, I think we're about 16 or 17 this year, to two different opportunities at Cooperative Education Services. One is Administrative Aspirant Program, those folks who have shown an interest and a desire to be an administrator, or were tapped on the shoulder by an administrator that I really think you might want to think about this route. And the second one is a teacher academy where they can go to work a little bit more on teacher leadership kinds of opportunities. So, we're sending about 16 or 17 different teachers to both of those sessions. Thank you.
If there are, Mr. Convetito, followed by Mr. Llewellyn.
I just want to follow up on a comment that you mentioned about the state report on shortages and so forth. And I know that we have the online system by which applicants apply. Do we do any other type of recruiting for those areas in which there are shortages?
Yeah, we do. Our curriculum leaders are really effective in this area. They know where the good programs are. We send folks out to different recruiting events. UConn Niag is putting out some phenomenal educational candidates, different sources where we know science teachers, for example, might be a part of this particular group, and we can tap into these universities, those kinds of things. So, again, our curriculum leaders are very helpful because they know where those sources are. So, we do seek these candidates.
Thank you.
We also host the regional recruiting fair here.
We do.
In Fairfield.
We do.
So, we get first dibs.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Sure. Following on something that Ms. Cannelly said, that we used to get a monthly report that had the changes and the like.
Right.
I don't, I seem to have misplaced them. I haven't seen, I can't find one since June. Is that something that I've missed, or?
Well, we didn't have a July, we didn't have a July Board meeting.
Right. We did.
We had the late August one. There should be one coming out pretty soon that compiles all the changes. We have a, no, I don't believe you missed any. We have quite a bit of folks on there who, because of all the changes.
Right.
Okay.
My memory, it may be wrong, but my memory is it comes out every so often, not exactly monthly because you don't have enough turnover to warrant something.
Goal is monthly.
Your goal is monthly, but it doesn't necessarily happen that way.
Correct. Correct.
And also, that includes not just certified staff, if you might remember. That includes all staff members, staff members going on leave, staff members who've resigned, transfers, people who've gotten advanced degrees. It's the whole shoot-and-match. Thanks, Anne.
Okay.
No other comments? Item B is on the agenda. There is an item C that Dr. Title wanted to bring us up to date on, on a particular school, Holland Hill. So, let's do the financial review, and then he'll do the, any other conversation he wishes to have. So, Mrs. Mencel?
Okay, we're going to go back in time now.
Right.
I'm going to start with enclosure 6A, which was, it's, it's the memo entitled 1415 Fiscal Year Financial Statement. And then there's the two-page report of accounts and numbers. And then there's a big page of budget transfers. So, I'm going to start with that big, this big page of transfers. This is the new format that Mr. Llewellyn had asked for, so I hope it, I hope I got it right. It's, the change is in the rows, and what we used to, what we used to report in rows, like under Personnel Services, would be a category, like certified salaries, non-certified salaries. These, these rows now match the summary object number that's on the, the financial report, the two pages of numbers. The columns are the same, and if you look at column one and two, those are the two, the two columns that you've seen already. We reviewed them at the, at the June 23rd meeting. That was the, first column is the proposed, the projected June 30 balance at 618, and then the transfers that you approved at the 623 meeting. The next three columns relate to the 630 timeframe, the June 30, which is the end of the fiscal year. Column three is the balance on June 30 before we did any transfers. So, you'll see, the total there is 582. We had, we projected, we were projecting earlier in June, the 380, believe we said, you know, somewhere in that vicinity, 380 to 500,000. So, on June 30th, it was 582. So, the next column, column four, are the transfers that were done on 630. Because we had that balance of 582, we were able to transfer 500 into the fixed charges, the benefits category, and it's circled in red, which left us the next column, the final column for 630, column five, with that residual balance of 82,000. Let me step, step back a little bit. The 860 that we had been talking about all along, the 700 and the additional 20 retirees, and the 160 from security that we committed to putting into medical retention, that's also circled in red. Now, I just want to note, in column five, on 630, we had to keep that residual balance of 82,000, because even though the, on 630, the fiscal year is closed in that we cannot commit any more funds to that year, but there are invoices that come in, or there's payments on encumbrances that happen, that, that still, you know, there's still activity in, in the month of July. So, the last three columns are the 731, which is our final close for the year. Column six was the transfer at that point in time, 731, which was a balance of 228. Column seven were the end-of-year closing transfers, which moved virtually everything, 228, 794, into the fixed charges for medical retention, leaving us with a whole 51 cents that we returned back to the town. That was our final year-end balance. So, you can see, we had a concerted effort to, to put as much money as we could possibly get into the medical retention fund because of our shortfall throughout the, the budget process. It seemed to grow in, in at the June, at, at the December timeframe. We, in the Board of Ed budget, the cash balance was projected to be one point, almost 1.3 million. In January, it was 1.4. February, it went down to 900,000, and in March, it went to 723. So, that was a commitment that we made, that wherever we could find money, we would put it into the medical retention fund. So, naturally, the next question is, how were we able to obtain this goal? The, I think the, you know, in analyzing all the numbers, I think the easiest way to summarize it and to think about it is, the, we received significantly more money in excess cost reimbursement. I had reported back in the December financial report that we had, and that we were filing on December 1 for special ed, an additional, 22 more students in excess, were excess cost eligible in December than we had filed before. It changed a little bit in March. It came down a little bit. And also, we had budgeted 75% reimbursement from the state, and it ended up that the state was able to distribute to all the districts 80% of what they owed us. So, we, the, the bottom line there was, we received $764,000 more in excess reimbursement than we, you know, than we anticipated, than we budgeted. So, that's virtually what's covered, the additional 728 that we put into medical retention. Now, there were other, you know, other areas where we were over, other areas where we, we, you know, got additional revenue, or had some savings that, that offset each other. So, this, the easiest way to look at is that the 764 is what, why we were able to, to cover that, mitigate that situation with the medical retention. On the, the, the financial report, the page, the pages with all the numbers. The bottom line here is, I highlighted in yellow, we had budgeted 19.3 million for health insurance. It's in yellow. We transferred a total of 1.588794, which is the, the 860, the items that are circled in red, the 860 that we planned on, on moving in there all along, the balance at 630 of 500,000, plus the 228. So, that's what that 1.588 is. So, we ended up expending the 20,0086 in medical retention. That's a good segue into the medical retention piece, unless you have questions on this. I don't know if you want me to move on?
I want to give you a full presentation, and then we'll take questions. You want to hit the pause button?
Just...
Mr. Confortito?
In, in reading, and thank you for printing it this big.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I just want to make sure I'm following. All of the blue columns, zero out. Is that correct?
Yes, because those are transfers just from one area to another.
Well, may I ask a question?
Okay. That was easy.
Okay, thank you. Continue.
Okay, the, the other handouts were 6B, which was a memo, and the, you know, the column that you used to on the, for the medical retention. So, the, the final two columns, 14 and 15, reflect the latest activity. The column 14 is the final 1415 activity, so where we were at June 30th. Everything in this column is a final number, except for the IBNR down below. We hadn't gotten that yet, so that's a calculation that'll come to us from the actuaries, and it'll, it'll just change that one number. So, you'll see the, the highlighted items, the, the amount that we have in the budget, the 19 million, and the additional revenue, the 500,000 in orange, is, if you remember, during the budget process, the town had earmarked 500,000 for us for medical retention, and it was budgeted and funded on the town side. So, when we closed out the year, they reported 500,000 in in-kind services to us. So, when we report to the state what our expenses are, that 500,000 counts. But it came from a, it was a town expenditure. So, that then became, went from the town side and the Internal Service Fund to the board side. So, it's deposited here in, in this 1415 revenue. Further down, the next group of colors is the one, broken out, is the 160 for security, the 700 from the additional retirees, and the additional 728 that we were able to, to deposit. Expenses, there are virtually no change in expenses since the last projection in March. So, the bottom line is our cash balance of 2.83 million on June 30th, which is an additional, you know, 1.3 million more than what we thought it was going to be in March. And actually, and obviously, that has the same impact on the 1516 numbers with no other changes, because there's no other new projection. So, that follows from, you know, all the activity in, in our finances for last year. The main story was health insurance. It was all moved into the health insurance line, which is then expended and deposited into, expended and deposited into medical retention, which is a separate fund.
I'm sorry, are we taking questions?
Are you finished with your presentation?
Done.
Okay. Mr. Confortito?
Okay, so if I look at your finer print sheet, okay, and I look at column five, we had, we had budgeted to be at 739,000 as of June 30th of this year, as a cash balance.
739, right.
That's what our, that's what our budget was, right?
For this year, right.
We, we're ending up at 2,038, okay, right? I'm looking at column 14. I'm looking at just our cash balances. And the difference on that is the 500,000 that the town put in, okay, the 160, the 700, the 728, which is the combined total of column four and column seven, line 203, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions that board members have? Mr. Llewellyn?
Thank you. First of all, thank you very much for adding those numbers. That's exactly what I'm talking about, because that way we can now map it back. So, that makes it easier to understand where things are coming from. And that's the first column there for the object code that I'm...
Are you on the financial or the medical?
I am. I'm on the financials. Where you added on the transfers, the first column for us, the object code, so now we can map it back to the prior page.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Sure.
Column one.
Column one on...
On the transfer page, yep.
First page.
Yep.
No, you added the numbers. I want to thank you for adding those object codes.
Yes.
So that we can now map it back to the book and everything else.
Okay.
A couple of quick questions for you. If we look down at line 305, support expenses, which is called professional and technical?
Under which category?
Section 5, support expenses.
Yep, okay.
So, is that what was on the prior report as what we call legal services, right?
As what?
Legal services?
Yes.
It is. So, we have a transfer that we approved back in, on June 23rd, for 459,000, which is reflected in column one.
No, 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 that's not the transfer. That's the projected balance.
That's the projected balance. Okay.
The transfers are in column two.
With the, okay, so the, the projected balance is negative. So, we will have to transfer in 459 to kind of make that one account, 305, whole, for legal services.
No, if you, if you look at that, that category of support expenses in the first column, those are the, the, what we were projecting to be a June 30 balance at, at that point in time, which was 618. So, in, in category 305, we projected a balance of negative 459.
Correct.
But then, all these other line items, you know, security, there's the 160, professional development, the 106, all of those total up to a negative 86.
Correct.
In that category, which is where the 900, the 90,000 comes in as a transfer into that category to balance it out.
Okay. So, I guess another way to look at it is, our appropriate, our, our budget as appropriated was for line 305, legal services, was 569. I'm back on one page prior. That was what our budget was, budget for legal expenses.
The budget for legal was 450.
Okay, so that's, there's something else in that 305.
Right, right.
In addition to legal.
Right.
Okay. That's one we should probably break out, because it, it's, it's hard to flow across, because that 459 was an overspend on legal services as of June 23rd, because that was on the legal service line as of June 23rd. And I guess if we look in the next column, column three, it looks like there's an additional $194,000. So, does that mean that legal service was a million two expended?
No, the 194 is the projected, see, is the projected balance in that particular line after the transfers.
Uh, I'm sorry, the column, I thought it was before.
The column what?
The column header says before transfers. Column three, the 194, 194,000.
That's before the transfer of the 500,000. It kind of, it goes in progression. So, first the projected balance, and then a set of transfers, then the next projected balance, and then the next?
Do you know what would be helpful? If we add a column zero, which would be as appropriated, kind of budget, and then final budget over, after, I guess it'd be column nine would be final budget. And then it's all on one page, and if we don't, it would make more sense.
Final budget or final balance?
Balance.
That's the last column?
Correct, or total expended. Right? It would be like going back to the, the prior page. We've got as appropriated as the first column, and then we have total expenditures. So, I guess we would want total expenditures as number eight, as number nine, because we don't have total expenditures on...
They're, they're on this report, though.
Right.
Okay.
But I'm having trouble footing them back and forth.
Okay. I, I just want to point something out, though, too. On, on the report that we gave you in June 20, for the June 23rd, we had, we used to, that, that's, that report was done by category. So, legal services, for instance, was broken out. But that's, but I just want to point out, that's what happens when you, when you do it by numeric category, as opposed to items, groups of items that you might be interested in, in case you want to go back to that.
Well, we could also break 305 in half. We can break 305 in half between 305 legal services and, and other, because legal services is 90%, pulling a number out of the air. And that way, we can, we can somewhat track that. But because the way this reads to me is, we were, we had an initial budget of 569. We transfer, we approved the transfer at the last meeting of 459, and then I look over into column three, and it looks like it's another 194. So, the way I'm reading this new schedule is, we spent a million two on legal. What you're saying is not correct.
No, no, no.
So, that's why, we should probably break legal out there if we could.
Okay.
And then have a, a budget number as column zero, and a total expenditure as column nine. And then I think this report is going to be like...
Okay, but in that one, that one particular topic, you, you got a spreadsheet with all the actual expenses by category?
Yeah, there was a discussion of legal expenses, and you broke it out in terms of the excess, yeah.
It, it's nice to have it all in one report, so it's easy to just, just look at it and, and not have to go back to other pieces.
Okay.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
I have one more.
Please.
So when we were talking about the medical retention, we said 700,000 was transferred in due to additional retirees. And how many retirees are normally in the, in the base budget? Was it 16?
Talking about last year's retirees, we budgeted for 19.
For 19.
This is like Trivial Pursuit. I'll take retirees in 1415 for 500, Alex. We budgeted for 19, and we had 39, if you go over here. Yes, got it. So we had 20 extra. But each year we budget based on our best estimate of what we believe the actual is, based on people. So we budgeted 19, we had 39. So we said.
Got it.
That we would take the equivalent savings from that. I think we said that in January, I mean, early on.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I get that.
Yeah. But doesn't mean that in, that we budget 19 every year.
Correct, because we're looking at the 39.
So we had 39, this year we had 22, before that it was 18. It bounces all around.
Because this reflects the 1415.
Correct.
Yes.
So we had the 20 over, the budget.
Right.
So we took all of that savings.
That's right.
And dumped it into medical retention.
So that is a, based on the number that we had this year of 22, we don't have much hope for that for next year as a pickup.
Right, there's not, I mean, we don't know at this, at this stage.
But generally speaking, there's not a lot of opportunity there.
Yeah, generally, we're much closer, right, much closer.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Fadabene.
Thank you. On enclosure 6B, which is your memo, in the last sentence.
Mm-hmm.
Where it says on July 31st, 2015, when the fiscal year was formally closed, we deposited an additional 228,787 into the medical retention fund as a result of unliquidated encumbrances. What do you mean by unliquidated encumbrances, encumbrances? What?
On June, like I said, on June 30th, we can no longer commit any, any funds from the prior year. So if a services, a service, if a service wasn't rendered, or an order placed, we can no longer commit funds beyond that. So of everything that we had, there's two things that happen in July. You have encumbrances, you place an order. It's an encumbrage that moves forward. The actual invoice comes in in July, and say it's for a thousand dollars, but it was only, you know, 800 dollars for whatever reason. Something's on, on back order, or that it's not available, or whatever. That 200,000 would get, I mean, the 200 dollars would get released back into a balance. And on the other hand, we have invoices that come in for like, you know, legal fees, or a service that will be an actual invoice as opposed to what a projected expense was. So.
And so this is the net of those.
In nets, right.
So they are no longer encumbrances, encumbrances?
After they're released, right. That's how we got the 228.
To summarize the medical retention fund, as I understand it, in essence, what we had to do was to transfer into that fund about 1.6 million dollars in addition to what we budgeted. Is that sort of a very broad-based summary of what we had done?
Mm-hmm.
So presumably next year, do you foresee having similar issues where you might have to appropriate more in order to avoid the possibility, have the transfer that, a large sum of money in during the year?
Dr. Tidal has his crystal ball, so he'll respond.
Okay, so we get three fiscal years in our, bouncing around in our heads right now. So we're looking at where we finished on June 30th, 2015. So based on that, we're in really good shape relative to our target, which is one times the IBNR. So now we're looking at a projection for the current year. So will we have to put more money in, in the current year? That is completely dependent on the experience that we experience as a district as we move through the year. So it's impossible to say what's going to happen with that. What we have here is the latest projection from Aon, which took our previous experience and trended it up by whatever it was, 9%. And that's in their, that's what their projected expenses are. Projected expenses this year are 31,533,857.
Right.
If our projected expenses go above that, our actual go above that, then our cash balance will go down. And depending on where we are budget-wise, we may or may not be able to put additional funds into the medical retention fund. And then for 1617, it's a huge crystal ball. But you can expect that our expenses for 1617 will be, if they stayed exactly where they are now, and we finish the year at 31,3, whatever it was, 31,533,857, if that was the projection, Aon is going to come in in December to the board and tell you, here's what we think your projected expenses are going to be for 1617, and we'll have to budget accordingly.
All right. So if I look at this, for example, in column five, we have our 2000, our final budget for 2014, 2015, which is approximately 19 million dollars.
And are you still on this sheet or a different sheet?
I'm still on that medical retention fund sheet, yeah. And if you look at column 15, the projected 2015, 2016 is 21.9 million dollars, more than it was budgeted for 2014, 2015 by approximately.
Yes.
Seven million dollars. All right, it's just.
Yeah, we put, yeah, so budget to budget, correct. We might remember, the budget that we're operating in right now, one of the biggest drivers for the increase that we got was needing to put more money into health insurance. And there it is.
There it is. I just wanted to.
Yes.
Understand that.
So that number carries all the way over. That, the purple 21,969,339 that Doreen has in column nine, it's still there over in column 15, 21,969,339. That's still our budgeted number.
All right. Now, the next question I have is I, there's a number here that appears to be wrong to me, and I want to see if it isn't wrong. You look at our final budgeted amount in column five.
What page, what are we?
This is still the medical retention.
Okay.
And it's 19,274,241, if I read it properly, for the year. And you go over to, and that number carries through because that's the appropriated amount all throughout the columns that it relates to, except for the final 2014, 2015, where it is 19,274,243. I would have thought that'd be 241. And I don't know if that's, why that's different.
I'm just.
Hi.
Perhaps, perhaps Mrs. Munsell can answer that question offline.
Find the $2.
Find the $2. Find the $2 in the $30 million haystack.
Okay.
Yes, it's an observation.
May, may have been a transcription error.
Yeah.
A rounding error of $2. That's it. We're guilty, you got us.
Anything else, Mr. Fadabene? No, thank you.
That's it. We surrender. You guys do the books from now on.
Any other questions on, on Mrs. Munsell's report? Hearing none, Dr. Tidal, move on to.
Thank you, Doreen.
Holland Hill.
Thanks. That's a preview of the December meeting, your medical retention warm-up. I just want to make a couple notes on situation at Holland Hill, just to let people know that the school is crowded, the school, the principal is working with Mr. Cummings and the staff to mitigate that. Principal's here tonight, if people had specific questions about that. As I think you, you know, were made aware at one point that we've run out of classrooms. We have right now a traveling music individual. We have people crammed in every which way over there. We are making the best of it. We're going to continue to work with the staff to mitigate this, but, you know, we are watching this. I should point out that, well, Mr. Cummings is not here tonight, and I can research this further if you want. There are no portables to be moved there. All the portables in the district are in use by students at this time, and most of them would, would completely fall apart if we tried to move them, because most of them are old. Portable is the wrong name for them. They are temporary. And some of them have already been moved once. And, you know, you're looking at a major cost to insert one over there, if it could even be done. It's not uncommon, it's not ideal. Other schools have put up with this over the years, pre-renovation. So I just want to let people know that we're aware of what's going on over there. We're doing our best to mitigate it. If we stay with the class size guidelines, then you end up with too many classes for the number of classrooms we have. The alternative, if you wanted to put music back in a room, is there are going to be some very large classes over there. So we prioritized keeping the classes within the class size limits. And again, this is not unprecedented, and the principal and Mr. Cummings have been working very hard on it. So I just wanted to let people know that we're aware of it and continue to work on it to make it as, as less of an impact as possible on instruction. It's just not ideal. It's what, the hand we've been dealt. That's all I have.
Mrs. Maxine Caneli, Mr. Llewellyn.
Two quick questions. First, it's my understanding, you're meeting with members of the Holland Hill community?
Yes, I've, well, on several topics, but yes, I'll be meeting with some members of the Holland Hill PTA tomorrow morning.
And as a separate question, just informational, because I can't actually remember the timeline. Obviously, the next time we'd be looking at anything renovation-wise with Holland Hill would be when we look at ed specs. But what is, and just as a reminder for the public, because I've been asked this a number of times, what is the timeline that it takes for putting together a building committee and subs, and the ed specs? What is, how does that play out as a timeline?
Right. So the, 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 the state and the cycle works in June 30th cycles in any given year. So to keep your reimbursement, you have to submit by June 30th of a given year. If you don't make that deadline, then you really have to wait till the next June 30th. So the way our plan is laid out is that we would be moving forward with a proposal for funding by June 30th of 2016 for Holland Hill, at which point a building committee would be impaneled and would begin to, if the town bodies approve that, that amount, they would be, they would be, get to, get to work on that. So we would probably be bringing ed specs to the board sometime in the spring, because we need to lay out for the building committee what they are charged to build. And of course, we also have to give that information to a cost estimator. Right now, we have a cost estimate, and they're based on a 462 capacity. If you remember, we had put in the original plan a 504 capacity, and then based on the board's discussion, we scaled that back to a 462. In ed specs, you know, you would lay that out. You know, here's what we're going to do. So based on that, then it would go forward to the town bodies at that point, and then a building committee would get to work on it from there. So it's a multi-year project to get the actual construction done, the renovation work done. The other thing that's going on, of course, is that the redistricting committee is, ad hoc redistricting committee is working. And before we bring anything back to the board in terms of ed specs, the board pledged to research the redistricting possibility, so that we would make a determination about, you know, exactly how much do we need to build over there? We know renovation is needed. The question is, how much space do we need to put there to replace the portables, if any? So that's, the timing on this actually works well, because this ad hoc committee is scheduled to report back to the board in March. And then once that's done, the board can make a decision about the scope of the work, and then we can make a funding request to the town. So we had a, I would tell you, unless you were going to report on this from the capital planning workshop.
I was, but continue because you're on a roll.
Okay. Well, sometimes I need to get off a roll. This is your chance. The capital planning workshop, several, I would say, of the more conservative financial folks on the Board of Finance and RTM, were kind of saying, what's taking you so long? Why are you only going to build a 462? You ought to build a 504. You know, it's overcrowded, we want to, you know, get this thing going. So again, that was not a perfect sample, but it certainly appears that the town bodies are hearing the need at that school, clearly, and are willing to, you know, at least entertain a funding request by June 30th, 2016. Again, some of this will depend perhaps on what happens in November, but it seems like the systems are in place. We can, we can definitely get a funding proposal through, and that's actually one of the messages I want to give to the, you know, Holland Hill folks, is right now, that's the game plan. Doesn't mean it's going to stay that way, but that's the game plan right now. It was a long-winded answer, but.
Anything else, Mrs., Mr. Llewellyn?
A couple of quick questions. So if the Board of Finance has determined that they want to move forward on this, and funding, and the ed specs come around in the spring, when's the soonest the addition would be done and children in?
Redistricting?
No, no.
Oh. Renovation or redistricting?
Well, no, no, your addition.
Oh, the renovation and addition?
Correct.
Looking at Sal leave. It takes a while. Let's think about this. It takes probably, the absolute earliest anything would start to happen over there would be the summer after that. That would be the earliest, and usually these projects.
Summer of '17?
Yeah. Right, the summer of '16, we'd bring it in. They'd have to go through, you know, design development, you know, the whole, all the steps.
Three years out.
You know, so it would be 17, the 17, '18 school year would be a prime construction year, if things go well. So, yes.
Three years out.
That's about right. So, yeah, it's, and that's a, that's moving it pretty fast.
Right.
You know, trying to think, you know, and that's not uncommon for that to happen. So I would say the earliest construction would start would be the summer of 2017. Depending on the nature of the construction, sometimes construction and renovation can happen while the building's occupied, sometimes it can't. All depends on things. So, yeah, we're looking at, yeah, we're looking at three years out.
Okay, so and if we're in that situ, if we're in the overcrowded situation now.
Right.
What's the cost of taking a portable from, say, Riverfield, because they just completed with theirs?
That's what I have to get firmer answer on. I don't know that that's even physically possible, given the condition of them. In fact, my discussion with Mr. Cummings was that those portables would probably fall apart in the transfer. Those portals are going to be occupied probably till January.
And why are they occupied?
Because they're, well, first of all, most of them are gone. We're down to two. Those two are there as swing space, because the pod is still under construction.
The fifth grade wing?
No.
It used to be the fifth grade wing?
Ah, yeah, yes, I guess. It was, it's, it's not even a wing, it's a.
But the answer is yes.
The answer is yes. That, the area of the building, if you're facing the building to the far left, that area is currently under construction, and that's the final phase. The final two parts of Riverfield that are left are the gym, which we anticipate to be finished somewhere around Thanksgiving.
Right.
And the pod, that wing, which we, which the schedule right now is to turn that over probably right after Christmas break.
And who moves into the pod?
Uh, the, right now, it'll be the people that are out in the portables will move into the pod. I believe that Mr. Quinn is scheduled to be here at the board meeting, at the next board meeting, to do a Riverfield update, so he could give you better answers than that. But I would think that we would be looking at having to, and of course, this goes against what we're trying to do in the district anyways, in terms of eliminating portable, so I don't think it's really realistic to move a portable. Then you have to look at what the cost of a, of a new portable would be. And I can get that information before the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments from board members? I will say that I've, in my YMCA days, moved a portable from New Canaan to Milford, and Milford to Branford. And I thought I was being cost-effective. It wasn't. It was very expensive to do it, and by the end of the time, we just burned it down because it had no value left. time, we just burned it down because it had no value left to it. It couldn't be moved. Committee liaison reports. The only one I'm aware of is the redistricting committee, Mr. Confortito, but there may be others.
We had our last meeting a week and a half ago. We met with the consultants, had a very good back and forth. Our next meeting will be this coming Tuesday, where we will be discussing criteria and guidelines for redistricting. That will be at Sherman School at 6:30 on Tuesday evening, the 29th. Public is welcome to attend. Public comment will be at the front end of the meeting, and will be limited to 15 minutes. If any, in order to try and get as much public comment in and not to get replication, the, if you look at the agenda, the first agenda was wrong. I amended it. There is a caveat in there that if any group wants to speak for more than one person, rather than having a chain of people coming up and reading two-minute blurbs of a presentation, if they email me and just say, hey, we're here from so-and-so, we have this many people, rather than having 10 people come up and pick up where somebody left off, we will try and expand the time limit beyond two minutes. Public comment will be limited to 15 minutes, though, just so we can get back to the table and get discussing the criteria and guidelines for a redistricting, should it occur.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, just one correction. I think Mr. Confortito said 6:30. It's 6:00.
I'm sorry.
Right. Just since the public comments at the beginning, I didn't want people showing up at 6:30.
Mr. Fattabene, followed by Mrs. Maxon Canelli.
I would just urge the committee to consider providing the public more time to speak than just 15 minutes. I think this issue may be important to a lot of people in town, and 15 minutes seems a little short, in my opinion, for public comment.
Mrs. Maxon Canelli.
And obviously, the public comment. The topic, however, is, refresh my memory again, those are the principles that were agreed to before, the guiding principles are, is that that you're using the ones from the past and just saying, are we still in agreement on these? Or are you actually considering putting some aside?
That is a beginning framework, but what the consultant asked us for was a top-five criteria. So, we will be looking at those and trying to prioritize them. We will probably give him more than, I assume, given our past history, there will be more than five, but they will be prioritized from 1 through X.
And, and again, I apologize for not remembering grouping different redistricting efforts together. Were those voted on? And is there a point in time when those would come back to us to be voted on again? Or is this just guidance to the consultant?
The ones, the guidelines that we are working from were voted on not by this board, but by the previous board in 2010. And then a previous board, or some that go back to 1995, that have still been adhered to.
So, the priorities would be from the subcommittee, but if there were actually new ones added, that would come before us for a discussion? That's what I'm trying to find out. Is it-
I'm open to, if there are new ones, I, my, if we were going to add or subtract from those guidelines, I would, my presumption that I would operate under would be that they would have to come back to the board for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Mrs. Lou McCormick, you've got the last word on this, on this, this committee report.
And on this topic, I think everyone's aware that this is a very sensitive topic for everyone, and I've definitely heard many rumors flying around regarding various aspects of the redistricting and how the feeder system would work.
Mrs. Lou McCormick, I've reminded you before, our discussion is with the board, not with the audience. Thank you.
Well, this is a report, okay, so I'll tell the board. There's been lots of rumors flying around. And so, I would urge that as we discuss this, that everyone understands that this is very early in the process, that there's been absolutely nothing decided at this point, other than that we should consider all the options available before we make any choices. And therefore, you know, don't jump the gun. There's, if you read the commission statement, it's a pretty limited scope, actually, as it stands right now. That's not to say that things could change. Things could clearly change, but they're not. They're not there right now. And additionally, we've retained a consultant to do a study on the racial imbalance. And while they are going to have some overlap with this redistricting, they have not been even retained yet by this board to do a full redistricting analysis. So, I'll just say, let's just take it one step at a time. We're at this point now, we need to get through this, and then we'll get to the next. So, I'll urge everyone just to, as we approach this, to do it calmly and step by step.
Anything else? And just to clarify, we don't retain people. The superintendent does the retaining of professional consultants. And so, the comment that the board hasn't retained somebody, the board doesn't make those decisions, the superintendent does. Any other committee of liaison reports that should be made at this time? I did research the Constitution and found that I could appoint you as a permanent representative to the, no, I'm just kidding.
Transportation safety advisors.
I'm just kidding. Any other comments from any other board members on committee liaison reports? If not, open board comment. Any comments from the board? I'm sorry. Mrs. Carnell?
So, I was up at open school night at Fairfield-Lenlo High School, and I'm happy to report that the cafeteria looks great.
They didn't serve any food, but it looks great.
Well, if you had come to Mr. Coyne's retirement party, they did serve food, and it was a wonderful turnout in honor of a gentleman and somebody who has served this district very well. We even had some retired Fairfield staff come back to wish him well. Any other open board comments? Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I also wanted to say that I was very happy to hear that a lot of the elementary schools have reported some of the I-Ready or S-Back results, and the I-Ready results will be reported shortly. The only point I would like to add is that, at this point, we haven't received detail on the strand information, which I know many parents really want, so that they can assist their children more carefully. So, anything that we, as a district, can do to encourage the state and also our department that has to put all the numbers together to issue them out, the more detailed information we can give on individual students to their parents, I think it would be very appreciated for a multitude of reasons.
Thank you. I don't see any, okay, Mrs. Gerber?
Can I just say something positive? Is that okay?
Mrs. Gerber, I've recognized you.
Okay.
You're jumping the gun.
Okay. Well, I was just, I just came from the woods, open house, which is why I was so late. And my daughter's Spanish teacher made it a point to say how excited she and her colleagues are with the new world language curriculum. So, just wanted to mention that since we just approved that.
Anything else? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Maxon Canelli, Ms. Carnell, all in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.